Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the March 24th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. A thought for today was included in the leadership Lorraine County calendar attributed to Bob Campiana from Campana Development. It says, "Do good things for people, and good things will happen to you." On this morning's agenda, we know that many of you are interested in item number 21, which calls for a decision on an expedited-to annexation petition of 91.23 acres from La Grange Township to the village of La Grange, Paul Blevins' agent. Mr. Blevins is in the audience, as is Gerald Phillips, who is an attorney representing various residents and the township. And Gerald Innis, Assistant Prosecutor, is representing the Commissioners in this issue. Just a little background for those of you who might not be aware, last year sometime, I believe it was, the Ohio Legislature passed updated rules regarding various forms of annexation. And this was requested as an expedited-to annexation, and it has different types of requirements than the old form, which would require a public hearing, et cetera. And it has timeframes, and when those timeframes are complied with, there's two, three, four, five, six, seven requirements, and if it meets those requirements, it says the Commissioner shall approve the annexation. If it does not meet those requirements, it says the Commissioners shall deny the annexation. That is our job in this issue. This morning, Mr. Phillips presented a two-page letter to the clerk of the Commissioners questioning some of the items in the petition that was presented to us. Therefore, I am requesting, and I apologize to those of you who have come to hear what we were going to do, because we're not going to do anything today. There was also a question about the timeframe. We were to schedule this for decision in 30 to 45 days. This is the 30th day, and I believe that Mr. Innis had talked to our clerk and suggested that we not make a decision today, but withhold a decision until next week. Since Mr. Phillips has brought forth these items of question, we will not be making a decision today anyway, so I believe it's best if we just hold all testimony until next Thursday at an assigned time. And with that in mind, I will move that we continue this discussion until next Thursday at 9:30.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Innis, would you like to comment?
I just wanted to clarify something for you, Commissioner. This is not an annexation that calls for a public hearing. It is a regular matter on the agenda, which the Commissioners can take public comment, but when you use the phrase "testimony," I just wanted to clarify...
Thank you, and I appreciate that. We are so used to the public hearing part that we keep using it, and Jerry has tried to educate us a little more on that. But it will be a meeting, and my intention is that chair is to hear what Mr. Blevins, as the attorney, has to say, to hear what Mr. Phillips has to say, and then to hear what Mr. Innis has to say. And then, if there's anyone in the audience who has further comment to make, other than what those gentlemen have to say, we will hear them as well. I know that the mayor of the village is here today, and I believe that the trustees are represented here. And I know we've heard from several of the residents, either via email or phone, either in favor of or in opposition to this annexation. So I want you to know that this is not a matter that the Commissioners are taking lightly, but we are also cognizant of what the Ohio Revised Code tells us we may and may not do, and what are the rights of the property owners involved, both those seeking annexation and those who are their neighbors. So with that, we will continue this discussion next Thursday at 9:30. Thank you very much.
Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bill?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
If there is one advance?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet?
Commissioners, I will request at this time an executive session at the conclusion of our regular business to talk about new hires, a matter of potential litigation, and also a matter of bargaining. We have a fact-finder's report that we need to deal with, and that's all I want to say about that until we do. These are all allowable topics under the Sunshine Law, and I would ask that, if possible, if it looks like we're going to have a long public comment, that we go into that and get that done before we extend the meeting at the conclusion of the regular business. Thank you.
Creation of a Northeast Ohio League of Leadership and Advocacy. This is a volunteer organization comprised of elected officials from township, municipality, and county governments that prioritize issues, devise strategic action, and methods for meaningful impact and influence on elected officials of the state and federal governments.
Commissioners, I think this is probably a 10-county area. This is something that we've been working on for a couple of years with Commissioner Peter Lawson Jones from Cuyahoga County, and Steve Hambley from Medina County, and Dan Troy from Lake County. I'm sorry, Elizabeth, when I turn that way, and then when I'm trying to think, I'm not quite as forceful. We've been working on this for a couple of years with Peter Lawson Jones from Cuyahoga County, Steve Hambley from Medina County, former Geogah County Commissioner Neil Hofstadter, and Lake County Commissioner Dan Troy, and some of the other outlying counties. And we met last, after the Noaka meeting last month, and we'll meet again after the Noaka meeting this month, trying to bring some cohesiveness to the issues that we face in Northeast Ohio, so that we can kind of speak with one voice to the Legislature. And so I would, if there are no questions, I would move that we approve this membership.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized the salarier of Mark Hagen Dorn, the bailiff at Avon Lake Municipal Court, effective retroactive to January 4, 2005, at a rate of $308.37, which reflects the county's 2/5 share.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for ODH, OBEIS, Help Me Grow program for fiscal year 2006. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on March 25 and April 1, and bids to be open at 1:30 p.m. on April 18 in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, accept the recommendation of Tax Incentive Review Council and approve the Turk Report, which includes the review of 33 tax abatement agreements, and the recommendation to continue 28 abatements for another year and acknowledge expiration of five abatements.
Rebecca Jones, do you have comments?
Yes, I do.
Please.
Rebecca Jones, Community Development. I just wanted to let you know that the Turk met on the 25th and the 28th of February. That's the Tax Incentive Review Council reviewed 33 abatements, five abatements expired, and 28 were recommended for continuation. I have a little bit of data. There's a report that's been prepared for you that you may find interesting. The total real estate investment for the 33 abatements was $97,580,87. The total personal property investment was $1,742,475. The real estate commitment did not exceed the commitment due to the newness of some of the abatements. However, the personal property investment exceeded commitment by over 300 percent. Also, another thing that's interesting was that 1,312 jobs were created, 3,929 retained. There was a 2,004 payroll for the jobs created that totaled over $62 million, which equals $47,445 per new job created. So overall, the investment in jobs created has had a significant impact on the economy in Lorraine County.
Very nice report. Thank you, Rebecca. Are there any questions? I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for various programs to include prepaid cards for school shoes, school supplies, school clothing, gas, and summer camps for Lorraine County Department of Job and Families. Notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on March 25 and April 1, and bids to be open at 2:00 p.m. on April 8 in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve an enter into Amendment Number 1 of the Transportation Agreement between Job and Families and Diversified Transportation Services. This amendment will increase the contract value by $35,000, and the total agreement will not exceed $145,000 effective April 1. All other provisions of Resolution 04-454 adopted June 17 will remain in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordaz, is this competing with our transit service in any way? For monies and...
I don't have a good answer to that, Commissioner, quite frankly. I think we do have somebody here from...
Sue Goings is here, I believe. We have the answer in the audience.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Jim. Sorry about that.
Sue Goings, Department of Job and Family Services. In actuality, our first choice is always the Lorraine County Transit System, and it's only after the transit buses cannot, for whatever reason, provide the transportation, that we move on to the diversified.
Okay.
Right, and what I was going to say, and thank you for rescuing me, was that Job and Family Services buys an awful lot of bus tickets, and we do a lot of, we even use a lot of the dial-a-ride, and then we have the brokerage program that we go through. So normally, their services are not competitive. I just didn't know in this specific instance whether it was or wasn't.
Get it out, Jim.
Other questions? Commissioner?
Thank you, that's all.
Thanks, Sue.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, approve Lorraine County Domestic Relations request for funding from Saint Anne Foundation in the amount of $15,000. The grant will provide for the funding of a full-time case manager to be utilized by the Success for Youth Program.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Engineers, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for replacing Emmons Road Bridge 0165. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on March 28 and April 4, and bids to be open at 2:30 p.m. on April 11 in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for construction of Cape Road Signal at Midview School. This notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on March 28 and April 4, and bids to be open at 3:00 p.m. on April 11 in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
Commissioner Kukowski, you had questions? Will you...
Yeah, I held this off for a week just to contact the county engineer, because I had a few questions about the traffic study, and my questions were answered, so I will second this. I have no problem with it.
Well, maybe you'll move in, and I'll second.
I'll move for passage.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under MRDD, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for mechanical systems upgrades for the Murray Ridge School in Alaria. This notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on March 28 and April 4, and bids to be open on April 11 at 2:00 p.m. in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Soil and Water, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the File Road Ditch Improvement Project in Alaria Township. This notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on March 28 and April 4, and bids to be open at 2:00 p.m. on April 19 in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordaz, County Administrator?
Commissioners, we had, I need to get some contracts approved over at Children and Family First. We had a delay, and because there's an appeal on one of the issues, and I've asked the clerk, you have the resolution, and I'll pass these contracts. They're routine, but we weren't able to get them onto the agenda, and we're pushing a time issue at the end of the month. Would you read that for the board?
Approve various contracts on behalf of Lorraine County Children and Family First for the provision of community-based programs for the prevention of child abuse and/or neglect. One is to Blessing House in the amount of $16,000 for the program residential respite services. Two, Catholic Charities, $25,135.53 for the Nuturing Parent Program and Mom Support Play Group. Alaria City Health Department, $18,018.66 for the bridge, which is birthing readiness, individualized development, and growth through education. And Neighborhood House Association, $30,188.56 for parenting plus program. This will be effective July 1 through 2005 through June 30, 2006.
Also move?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Does this come out of our general fund monies?
No, this comes out of Children and Family First. The money's at, right, the Children Trust Fund. So Mr. Crespo's here. We have any questions? Pretty routine stuff, but he is still...
Okay. Morning, Juan.
Do you want to move for the, I mean, do you want to take the roll call, or did you want your discussion? Okay. Ms. Blair?
We don't know, but yes.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
I see Danny here, so I'm not sure. Do you have something you want to do before we move on? Are you going to do something with this? Why don't you take care of that now?
Dan Bilman, the Solid Waste Director for the Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners, and Jim.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity today to come and talk to you a little bit about Harvest for Hunger program that the Commissioners have initiated. I want to first thank you for initiating this program, and this collection drive is very important. Encouraging the county employees to participate is a very, very good thing for the county. We have over 50 donation boxes out there right now, and we would encourage the public to use these facilities and bring in non-perishables until March 31, which is the ending date for the collection. If you'd like to bring in money in the form of a check, hopefully, you can take it, you can go into the location, and they will give you an envelope like this right here, and they will, if you do not need a receipt, you just put the money in the envelope and seal it up, give it to the coordinator that's on staff that is taking care of it. If you'd like a receipt, you just fill out your address, everything underneath the verbiage here, and Second Harvest Food Bank of North Central Ohio will, in fact, send you a slip for your donation so you can get a tax deductible. I would like to publicly thank my staff members, Dan Paluch and Dave McGuire, for putting this program together. It was a large effort, and I think that they've done a very good job. So again, Commissioners, thanks for giving us the opportunity to get this out to all the employees.
Commissioners, I want to thank Mr. Bilman and the staff for taking on this task. We haven't engaged in a lot of this activity in the past, and I think it's right and proper that we try to set an example and take a leadership role with some of these issues. We don't have a lot of staff people up here. A lot of people think we do. They think we have a whole, you know, rooms full of people up here that work for the Commissioners, and we're very small-staffed, and having these folks come forward and do this is really good for the rest of us, and hopefully, we can emulate that and get involved with more of this type of work around the county through the hard efforts of our employees. So Danny, I want to thank you personally for stepping up with your people to do this. It's a good job. With that, that'll conclude my business this morning.
Mr. Innis, Assistant Prosecutor?
I believe my associate, Mr. Flanagan, wants to discuss a couple of legal issues with you in executive session.
Okay. Commissioners, report.
No report.
Just like to say, I'd like to congratulate Al Urbannick again. I was at the Veteran of the Year Dinner on Saturday night. Very nice turnout, liked to see all our vets there, and Al was honored as Veteran of the Year in Lorraine. Let's just say congratulations some again, and apologize to the Derrymen's Banquet, because I got out late from Veteran of the Year and couldn't make the Derrymen's Banquet.
I ate your ice cream for you.
Thanks, Betty.
Just a reminder that on Friday, April 1, April Fool's Day, our Lorraine County Community Alliance is going to be meeting at 9:00 a.m. at Lorraine County Community College for Lorraine County Transportation Day. Tom O'Leary, ODOT District 3 Director, with his staff will be there. Howard Mayer from Noaka will be there, and Lorraine County Engineer Ken Carney will be there. We'll talk about transportation in Lorraine County, and how we might improve things, and how you might access various dollars, et cetera. So it promises to be a very informative day. I'd like to say thanks to Ted's assistant, Tony, and whoever else helped draw it. I got this lovely pen for my birthday this past week. Thank you, ladies incorporated. I love it. And happy Easter. Thank you.
I don't have any report. Four correspondence.
I'm with your reading be waved. Second. Long week, Hunter Esz.
Yeah. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment? Anyone wishing to address the board? Please come to the microphone.
You'll get your turn in a minute, Shirley.
Oh, she's county. I'll look at her. She's checking her watch.
I'm Michael Zunich. I'm the Program Administrator for Lorraine Soil and Water District. I will be attending your meetings whenever we have a ditch program coming in front of the Commissioners, in case there's any questions or requests for more information. One little thing, the two new Commissioners aren't aware of this, this is kind of new, where we're using the county to do the contracting rather than doing it through our own Soil and Water Board, and I'd like to just compliment the county for doing an excellent job on the contracts, in my opinion. They're much better than what we were doing before. And so into the future, I think we'll have a better program. Just so you know, you're going to be seeing probably four or five more programs coming in in the future here.
Good, and we're going to get four or five more ditches cleaned, right?
Yes.
Good.
And that's one of our main objectives, is to get the maximum amount of ditches cleaned for the money available.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Rummix, Oberlin, Ohio. I am just interested in number 10 on the agenda. The reason being that some members of the League of Women Voters Oberlin Area are interested in a kind of survey of economic conditions, problems, and so forth of the Oberlin area, and have begun interviewing various people in town and in the township on the matter. And so that's the reason for my interest. So my question is, will these meetings be open to the public, or will there be reports from them? How would one know when there are such meetings, if the public may attend, and so forth, as I think one or two of these people might?
Well, you can always call me and ask me, and I'll try to keep you apprised of what's going on. The next meeting is after the Noaka meeting, the second Friday in April. It'll probably be at noon at the Noaka offices, and I'm sure if any public wanted to attend, they'd be more than welcome.
And usually, you have been very, you or the other representatives have been very good about giving us some information about Noaka meetings, and I assume that would be the case here, too.
Thank you.
We have a link on the Noaka website. Turn it on, Jim. Turn it on. Too much technology. I think we have a link on our website, to the Noaka website, and they post an awful lot of material. Now, just so I'm not speaking, you know, out of school here, I'll go back and verify it, and if we don't have a link, we'll get one. And this way, you'll be able to take a look at what they're doing. It's probably one of them really good ideas that we, I think we've already accomplished, though.
Anyone else? If not, I move that we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator.
Second.
And the prosecutor.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash." Litter lowers property values, and it's costly to clean up. Keep Lorraine County beautiful. Put the lid on trash.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geogah and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area, and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners, and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun.